... planning board meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Aikman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
And Lori G. And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got rid of the left wing.
Okay, we have two upcoming meetings. We have a few folks who are not here with us tonight, but we should have one more member joining us shortly. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on December 18th and one on January 15th. I know this is the time of year where weather starts to become a little bit dicey. So, I appreciate that, thank you.
Two-minute delay.
Test of your patriotism, and you all failed miserably.
No, they didn't. No, they didn't.
No, it would have been passed nicely.
All right, sorry about that, folks. Just a little, little feedback. So, again, this is the time of year where we may have to cancel meetings and things like that, so just stay in tune. Pam will always notify us, and we usually put announcements like that out in the public forum as well. We do have a couple of meeting minutes to approve, but I think, Pam, I'm going to hold them over because I'm not sure we have a quorum to approve the minutes right now. So, if that's all right, we'll bring those back in December. We also have, well, yeah, we have a quorum if we're all willing to approve our meeting dates for 2019. And I would just note again, you'll see one meeting per month, and as needed, we'll be able to schedule a second meeting. I know we used to have a first and third of the Tuesday of the month meeting, but if we need them, we'll go ahead and schedule those additional as we go. So, do I have a motion to approve the 2019 meeting dates?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? All right, we're in good shape. So, the next item or first item on our agenda is Gasland East Fishkill Site Plan Special Permit for Flood Plane Development, sorry, Special Permit, Flood Plane Development Permit and Land Excavation and Filling Permit. This is on for decision this evening.
Good evening. Christopher Lapine with the Chasin Company is representing the applicant, Gasland Petroleum. Since our last appearance before the planning board in September, we had made a formal submittal to the DOT for our highway work permit for the project. We've also made a formal submittal to the Department of Health for our onsite wastewater treatment facility, and we have responded to two of the three remaining comments from your floodplain administrator, one relating to showing cover on the outlet pipe for our wastewater treatment facility, which we did, and we gave him an explanation as to why there was some additional fill in our calculations from the previous ones, which was a result of incorporating the onsite wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
The only outstanding comment.
But you didn't change the elevation of the building or the site itself or anything like that?
Correct. We, we just did the detailed design of the onsite system, which resulted in this retaining wall over here being slightly pushed out.
Okay.
So, we calculated that area, which was 550 square feet, multiplied it by the additional fill of three and a half square, three and a half foot in depth, and one of your comments earlier in the review process, it might have been from your office, Pete, was to have some scour protection on the outside wall. So, we added that scour protection plus the other fill to give him the numbers requested. With regards to, saw off from the Army Corps of Engineer, the applicant's wetland consultant contacted the Army Corps. The initial response was, there's no permit needed from us, direct contact with us, but if you want something in writing, you have to make a formal permit submittal. That was made on September 30th. The Army Corps did not respond by their November 15th timeframe. We have asked for them to give us something in writing indicating that they've blessed this project at this point. They have 45 days to respond to an application. If they fail to respond, your permit, or in this case, we don't need a permit, but something indicating.
Okay. Do we have a copy of what you submitted to them or the proof of mailing or something like that? What do we require, Michelle, if we're not going to receive an Army Corps response?
I haven't, I haven't seen any.
We haven't gotten anything back from the Army Corps yet. We, we've reached out to them since the expiration date last week and asked them for something. So, as soon as we get something, we will.
And have you provided us with the copy of the firm application? I don't think you have.
It would have been in the end of September. I don't recall. It was submitted by the wetland consultant.
If you could just give us a copy of that.
We can give you a copy of that.
So, Michelle, if we have to tweak the resolution items, just let me know. Any other changes to the plan itself?
There are no other changes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Anything, Dave, from Hudson Ballot? Michelle? Pete?
No, the only thing is, did we ever get a signed maintenance agreement for the storm order?
Yes.
Okay, so the town.
Got the signed copy?
Signed copy. There's the only part of it, I mean, there's no signed contract yet. There's a copy of the contract.
Right, that, right, there was a copy of it, but.
Yeah. It, it goes into effect, that contract, as soon as you, like, there's nothing in the ground right now. You know, it's got to be installed. He's not buying anything right now. It's, he doesn't have an approved project, so he's not. But that is the contract that he's under. You wanted a copy of a contract. It's not signed, but I mean, I can't sign something that's not installed.
Those are some way, I don't know, some way that that can be tied to the certificate of occupancy somehow, that once it's installed, that we get a copy of the maintenance contract for the stormwater treatment unit?
I think we could do something like that. Tom, I know we've a couple times had conditions that survived from the issuance of those.
Yeah, in fact, this is a situation where we're probably going to have them get an operating permit through the building department, and then they'll have to show us a valid maintenance agreement each year at every term, so we'll handle it that way.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Pete?
No, that was it.
Okay. Tom, good?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So, if there are no other questions, I have a negative declaration dated this evening, November 20th, for this, sorry, Gasland East Fishkill Site Plan. For this negdoc, we've reviewed long-form EAS. It's determined to be an unlisted action under seeker, and we identified several environmental issues as relevant, including the following: land use and zoning, water courses, floodplain, visual character, hazardous materials, and transportation. With regard to land use and zoning, the proposed project would result in the construction of a gas station and convenience mart that was previously occupied by a gas station and an auto body shop. Therefore, the proposed use is a permitted use under zoning and would be consistent and compatible with the surrounding uses and former uses. Water courses, we've, the proposed project will result in a small amount of disturbance to the stream bank of the Hortal Kill, Hortal Kill Creek, excuse me. The proposed disturbance is under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and may result in a, may require a permit and/or mitigation. The applicant is required to work with the U.S. Army Corps to avoid impacts to the stream to the greatest extent possible, and because of this, there are no additional significant adverse impacts to the Hortal Kill Creek anticipated from the proposed project. From a floodplain perspective, the proposed project will require a floodplain development permit from the town. The proposed project will result in the installation of a discharge pipe from the proposed sewage treatment plant within the Hortal Kill Creek's stream bank. The proposed disturbance will be reviewed again by the Army Corps to determine if a permit or mitigation will be required, and similar to the water courses, no significant impacts to the floodplain are anticipated from the proposed project. Next is our visual character. The proposed action will result in the construction of a 2,000-square-foot gas station and convenience store. All structures and signage would be located outside the 100-foot buffer to the Teconic State Parkway and will be partially buffered by the existing trees and vegetation at the site and parkway. Because of this, the proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts to the visual character of the TSP. Next is our hazardous materials. The proposed project will result in the remediation of a contaminated former gas station. Therefore, the proposed project would be expected to have a positive impact on the environment by removing hazardous materials from the site. Unless traffic and transportation, the proposed project will reactivate a former, a vacant former gas station site located near the intersection of Route 82 and the Teconic State Parkway. No significant adverse impacts to traffic and transportation were identified as part of the proposed project. However, it should be noted that the vacant signalized parcel located immediately east of the project site is developed, if the, sorry, if the site immediately to the east is developed in the future, the town will require the applicant to construct a connection between the project site and the adjacent undeveloped parcel. This will provide the Gasland site access to a signalized drive. So, in conclusion, no significant potential impacts were identified as a result of the proposed action. Do I have a motion to approve the negative declaration?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Does somebody want to offer their resolution?
Sure.
Michael?
Resolution of final site plan approval, floodplain development permit, excuse me, and land excavation and filling permit. Name of the site plan is Gasland East Fishkill. Name of the applicant is Gasland Petroleum Incorporated. Location is Route 82 East Fishkill, lot number 655903290302. Resolution offered by planning board member Michael O'Brien. Whereas the above referenced applicant applied to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board on February 28th, 2018, for site plan approval for a proposed gasoline filling station/convenience mart to be located at 1071 Route 82, and whereas the planning board held public hearings on August 21st, 2018, and September 18th, 2018, when the hearings were closed, and whereas the planning board declared themselves lead agency on August 21st, 2018, and whereas the planning board has on this date adopted a negative declaration, whereas the applicant has acknowledged that an Article 78 proceeding has commenced challenging the zoning code section under which this approval was granted, but absent a stay or decision wishes to obtain approval. Now, therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the site plan submitted by the applicant's engineers, Chasin Engineering and Land Surveying Company, dated February 28th, 2018, and revised through August 31st, 2018, with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall include a note on the plan stating that the adjacent site is developed in the future. A connection between the two sites shall be constructed allowing ingress and egress to the Gasland site from the existing traffic light. In the event the adjacent site is developed and within one year of full operation of the fourth leg of the existing traffic light, the applicant must come back before the planning board to address any resulting modifications to the site's ingress and egress or overall site plan. Third, reset of a letter from the United States Army Corps of Engineers stating the project is exempt from permit for the proposed sewage treatment plant discharge to the stream or the United States Army Corps approval of the location and installation of the discharge pipe from the proposed sewage treatment plant to the stream.
Okay, so a couple of things. Michelle or Tom, do we need to call out the special permit in addition to the floodplain and the cut and fill?
It's listed at the top versus resolution of final.
Just the approval. The resolution has it at the top of the resolution, at the title.
Mine says resolution of final site plan approval, floodplain development permit, and land excavation and filling permit. I don't see special permit.
Oh, but, okay.
Right? Isn't there a third permit, the special permit that lets them?
Section 19485, that allows a remediation.
I thought if it's, if it's a redevelopment of a site, it's, a special use permit's not required.
It's not a special permit. It's just a section in pre-existing use.
Okay.
No. The original gas station would have needed a special permit.
We have in, we have in our agenda that there's a special permit included here.
No.
Okay. All right. We don't have conditions that we normally have for DOT and Department of Health approvals. Do we need to add those?
Well, it's a site plan, so that, that, they'll need that to get the building permit, but they don't need it to have a map. If you want to add it, you can add it. I mean, it's not an issue.
What about the DOT?
I would say if you're going to add, you know, the Health Department, might as well add them. I mean, they're approval agency.
Don't we normally do that, or we don't normally do that with the site?
We don't have to because the state, they can't cut the driveway without DOT permission, so.
Yeah, we, plus, from your previous comments, we have comment noted. Once we have approval, we owe it to you. So, we can put it in the resolution, but I, I'm aware I have to, I owe that to you.
Okay. And then, Michelle, I think we were going to add an item regarding the resolution of any outstanding items from our professional letters. I know that, Chris, you mentioned that you addressed a couple of Rick's comments from the floodplain administrator.
That was the only outstanding comment letter we had. We had addressed the, with the exception of Department of Health approval and DOT, we had addressed David's company. We addressed Michelle's and Pete's comments.
Okay, so do we want to just condition for the final resolution? Because I don't know if Rick's had a chance to review anything you've provided to him. Has he? We don't have anything back from him saying his letters are. So, we'll add a fourth condition that says.
A factory resolution of the professionals' letter, floodplain development administrators' letter.
Okay. Pam, we don't have the date handy, do we, for that?
September 6th.
September 6th. Thank you.
Don't get it. Don't get it.
How does the board feel? I normally like to see the DOT and the DOH requirements in our resolutions. We, I know you're saying they don't have to be there, but I know we've put them in other resolutions. I'm just.
DOT and, those are the.
DOT and DOH.
Yeah.
Same plan anyways, but, okay.
We're good.
Okay. Anything else? Any other changes? Okay, Michael, go ahead.
Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
By Sean, and votes as follows. Jason?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Have a good one, Michelle.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. See you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Millbrook, a discussion for Millbrook Properties' amended site plan on Route 82.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark Day, Day Engineering. How's everyone?
Well, thanks.
We're here this evening to propose an expansion to the existing Millbrook property structure, which is where Mario's bread is currently housed. The structure that we're proposing is on the west side, if you will. It's a 26-foot addition. Its purpose is to mainly serve the bread machine. There's this huge bread machine in there that, right now, we were going to propose a new addition here, but it wouldn't fit, so we're proposing to add this structure where that new bread machine will go.
So, Mark, I think you, you had something before, once before, where you were putting the addition in a different place.
We were actually raising, we were raising the roof.
Okay, on a section. So, is this going to have the same requirement to raise the roof?
No, apparently.
So, it's a different piece of equipment, or it just doesn't need it?
I think it's the same piece. We just configured it differently.
Okay.
The way it worked, it had a big funnel where the bread dropped down, and, so we're not doing that anymore. We're doing something else.
Okay.
I'm not a bread guy, so I don't know, but this is supposedly what we need to do.
So, I think in the application, or Michelle, I think in the application, it said that this new area is for storage. Is that?
Well, it's equipment storage only. It's, it's not for patron use. As, I'm sure everybody knows, the patron side's right here. It's limited to that, but the actual, the machine will be in there, and I'm sure there's going to be flour and what have you in, in that side, but it's.
Is it workspace, or is it storage?
No, it's work and storage.
Work and storage.
I mean, a machine will go in there, so I'm sure you're working it.
Okay. I think along with this, you had a couple of variances and things like that you needed, right?
Three, yeah.
Okay.
We need front, we need side yard, and, well, we need the one-side, both-side variance. We need the rear yard, sorry, and the front yard.
Okay. And Michelle, is this, is this a existing permitted use, or is this a non-conforming use or conforming use?
It's a conforming use.
Okay. Do you have elevations of what you're proposing?
You really want to see it?
Yeah. Should I not want to see them?
Well, it's very rude.
Okay. Michelle, I think.
I think that addresses one of the other questions we have, which is, would the building extension look like the existing?
Yeah, the character of it. Thank you.
We're going to match it.
Okay.
I know it's not one of the prettiest buildings in town, but.
It's one of the more productive.
It gets things done.
So, you're going to match the, the existing windows that you're, that are at the eyeglass door, let's say, which is going to carry it forward like that?
Yeah, and then we're going to, around the side, there's, there's windows. We're going to match that, so.
So, he will need to also go to the ARB and, and also be referred to the zoning board for the variances.
Okay.
How big is the existing building? I'm just.
Existing building, I, you know what, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't see.
It should be on the site plan, though.
Yeah, I don't know if I have the cover sheet.
Oh, I was just trying to see the proportion of the.
Yeah, I think it's, it's about.
Thirty percent?
About thirty percent.
It's not on, it's not on the site plan. Parking lot encroached into your prop, into that property? Does the neighbor's parking lot encroach into the property?
Well, this is all by.
Both, all right, so that's not.
It belongs both. But.
Yeah, it appears there is, yeah.
What, what's the grade change there? Because I always have the impression.
Flat.
It's totally flat?
Yeah, it's flat.
Maybe because the other building is kind of.
It's a raised ranch.
Yeah, okay. That's why I always have the impression it's a different elevation. So, Michelle, in terms of the use of the new space, so it may be some workspace, mostly storage space, parking, you've got a tenant in the front, only one tenant in the front now, right, or do you have two again?
Right, just one. It's the eye doctor.
East fiscal eye, right.
Okay. Is there another bakery?
No, there was a printer, I want to say copiest, I, one of the printers was in there, but they, they've since left.
So, is that space going to be rented, or is that going to be acquired by the bakery?
I'm sorry, the, this piece right here was, I think, was taken over by the eye doctor.
I think the eye doctor.
Okay, so the eye doctor, so now it's just going to be the two uses.
Correct, and, and then Mario will occupy this, and then the back piece.
Okay, and then what are, what you're moving into the addition is, you're basically just reconfiguring the space. You're not adding, you're just adding more storage, but you're not adding any more space for patrons to use or anything that would require additional parking?
If you've ever been in here, the patrons, this is it.
That's it, still?
That's all. And we're not.
No new employees. The bread machine is not going to require, it's just, it's just basically infrastructure that you need the space for.
That's it. Yeah, we're not planning any more employees.
So, Michelle, I'm, from a parking perspective, it doesn't sound like it's going to significantly change the parking requirement, but the square footage does add a space or two. So, right now, we've got 20, 20, 21?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, I don't know how many doctors or the eye doctors.
He's just one.
He's just one. So, they'll, they have plenty of parking then.
Okay. Okay.
Plus, I would bet that the majority of the business is on weekends and holidays when the optometrist is closed.
Yeah, tomorrow will be bananas over there, but, yeah, that's main leader.
Any, I mean, there's not a lot of space for landscaping or anything like that. I don't think there's a lot you would do. It's going to be right up close to the lot line, but it's a commercial use to the, what's that?
There is two trees in front.
Yeah.
But you're not proposing putting additional landscaping or anything in?
Is it true the optometrist has put on significant weight since moving next to the bakery?
True. Nice.
At any rate, maybe not.
All right. Anything else we need to go over? Any other questions for us?
No, we're just, I think we, I think we need to get referred.
We need to refer you to the zoning board, obviously, before we would bring you back, I think.
Then we'll be back.
And the ARB, yeah. Okay. Any other comments, Dave, Pete?
The concern was the, the proposed use for the added area, but.
Bread.
It's storage, it's not generating any more traffic.
Just bread.
Just bread.
What was the height of the new addition going to be?
To match the others, I think it was about 12 feet. We measured to the, to the soffit, so it would be the same.
Those are great businesses. It's great to see it growing.
Thank you.
Yeah, Arlene, you know, one of our, one of our comments was, Mark, I don't know if you're going to think about a drainage swale along the side of the building.
Yeah, no, we saw that.
There is some water. It looks like it's coming off the built, off the, off, off the property there to the west.
Yeah, we're going to try to combine.
Just do something like a V-type, just, it's not a big deal. And then, the site is served by public water, right?
And sewer, I believe.
Oh, both?
I believe sewers, I believe this is connected.
Because when I looked on Parcel Access, it had said it was private sewer, but maybe.
I think, if you remember, there's.
There's a pump station.
Pump stations right here.
Yeah, right.
So, and the generator and everything's back here for it.
Yeah.
So, I believe this is connected.
Okay, all right.
But I will check with you.
I mean, not that it's going to, like, affect anything, but it might be good to at least show where the utility lines are for order and sewer. Approximate it.
Okay.
Other than that, other than that, that was it.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to refer the Millbrook Properties amended site plan to the zoning board for review, and you also need to go to the architectural review board?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an extension of final approval for this fee and subdivision.
Dave, have a good one.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I have here, it, it looks like we, we gave you your last extension in October of 2016 for a year.
Correct.
We missed last year. It sounds like it was an oversight all around.
Correct.
So, you're here for an extension, for retroactive extension, and then an additional extension for the coming year.
To get it done, yes.
Okay. All right, and I think we have a letter from your surveyor and letting us know.
Surveyor and the engineer, and just, I've got my ducks in a row to get this done. It had a long lifespan, thinking it was a long way off, but finally, I just got to get this done.
Okay. One of the things that we typically do with, with subdivisions is, if it's gone out more than three or four years, we just ask that your professional provide us with some sort of letter or review of any laws that might have changed since you originally submitted this, and whether that would change, if, change your site plan or subdivision request if you were to apply for it today.
Okay.
So, typically, what we would do is we would give you a 90 days to be able to provide that letter back to us, and then we'd put you back on an agenda for the full, full extension, consideration of a full-year extension. So, if there's any questions or comments from board members, any concern with that, is what we've required of other, other applicants, just to make sure that we're not, because this went back to 2012 as the original approval, so we haven't seen it, to change it since then. Go ahead.
I think it's a key point, though, that, the reason why, one of the reasons you're taking your time with this, is that besides the problems with the Health Department and the rest of that, is that this isn't like you're putting this up for sale. This is, you're giving this land to your children, who are, you know.
It was. It's been that forever, but now one looks like she's going to med school for seven years, and the other one moved to Colorado, so who knows now? You make good plans, and then they change.
There's no, there's no tie with the subdivision that requires that you do that, but we understood at the time that was your intent.
Yeah, it's just to fill in the background what the deal was, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, so, Michelle or Pete, any concerns, any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to grant a, an extension retroactive from October 17th of 2017 through February of 2019 to enable the applicant to provide us with an update on whether or not any laws would change that subdivision as it currently exists?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Happy holidays.
Enjoy your holiday, yes. Okay, the next two items on our agenda are referrals from the town board. Michelle, could I have you walk us through?
Sure.
The two documents, and I think we have them in our packages tonight, if you haven't had a chance, folks, to look at them yet.
Sure, we're not going to schedule a site visit for the easy storage?
Oh, I apologize. I skipped over, I'm sorry, I skipped over it. We had a request from the town, town engineer and applicant to defer this to our December meeting, so I apologize for the change to our agenda. We will have this back on to schedule a site visit. Change, change in control of the property, and just wanted to make sure that there's[1793.66] Change in control of the property and just wanted to make sure that there's site plan compliance and some things like that, they wanna walk us through some things they're doing at the site. So, and I apologize, folks, I didn't mean to skip over that. So, Michelle, are you okay to walk us through the two town board referrals? Are you gonna do the Hamlet one first or the Rezone? The Hamlet, I'll do the Hamlet.
Head out, folks, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, happy Thanksgiving, Pete.
Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, Michelle, you too, thank you.
I'll share. So what are we doing there?
Basically where they're gonna put multiple buildings, which means, big thing, that you can have residential and a commercial, so that you can get people living over shops and stores and stuff to create more of a sense of place and a town feel.
Gotcha, nice.
I hope that wasn't perfect and it's kind of for an architectural museum, but use this kind of stuff.
Right, and then every other city in the state is doing it.
He's your butter guy, you got any questions about butter? He's your guy, bread, that's all. Other cities already have the buildings that way. Good evening, Mr. Paraschiva.
Always nice to see you, Mike.
Pam, can I ask you to flip it while I talk? Because I'm not gonna be able to do both at the same time.
Oh, we don't have a.
You want me to? I can do it. Pam, would you prefer I do it or?
No, you have to sit by the computer.
Okay.
Okay.
He could read it.
It's not high tech.
Alright.
Yeah, I know.
You've been, you've been training all your life for this, right?
Yeah, this is the moment.
And Michelle, I think.
This is it.
Michelle, we have the copy of your PowerPoint attached to the Rezone, so if members of the board wanna follow along, we have it in your package.
So the town board is currently considering a proposal for zoning.
Talking to the mayor.
For a mixed-use zone in two locations in the town. One is along the Route 52 corridor, basically from Pallan Road to Lime Kiln in that section, and then the other is in the 82 Hopel Hamlet corridor from Unity Plaza, essentially to where the bridge crosses over where Daddy O's Restaurant is, like to that, to the beginning of that bridge. And the idea is that in, in that corridor, we would create and, or allow for slightly higher density and a mix of uses on parcels, which is characteristic of what you see in downtowns and villages, centers. So what is mixed-use zoning? Mixed-use development is characterized as pedestrian-friendly development that blends two or more residential, commercial, cultural, institutional, and/or industrial uses on one, can be on one parcel, or it can be in parcels next to each other. This variety of uses allows for people to live, work, play, and shop in one place, and then it becomes a destination for people from other neighborhoods as well.
Michelle, does mixed-use zoning have to always include residential or can it, could it be like a mix of, like?
It can be a mix of commercial and industrial as well.
But doesn't it have to be mixed?
Yeah, there has to, well, it doesn't have to be mixed on the same parcel, but has to be mixed within, like, close proximity or walking distance, because that's kind of the idea behind it, that you're actually, you're able to access several uses typically by walking within an immediate location. So what's the benefits of mixed-use zoning? Town centers are more dynamic and sustainable with an appropriate mix of complementary uses. Traditional neighborhoods and main streets have always balanced the mix of residential and pedestrian-friendly commercial uses in a similar manner to what the proposed mixed-use district would permit. So, some of the expected benefits of mixed-use zoning would be a reduction in vehicle miles traveled, because people can park their car and then do several errands in one location. So that results in lower greenhouse gas emissions, lowers commuting costs, and decreases road congestion theoretically. You allow for livelier town centers with public gathering places and a variety of shops, restaurants, and entertainment. You have complete neighborhoods where residents can live, work, and play. There's a diversity of housing for people of all incomes and at all stages alike. One of the big aspects of this mixed-use zoning is that we're thinking of allowing, potentially allowing second and possibly third floor residential above commercial uses, ground floor commercial uses, so this would bring some residential into the downtown that helps activate the downtown in the evening, gets more people out and about, you know, going to the restaurants and frequenting the businesses. So you have more vibrant commercial areas that provide retail and services for patrons, you have more compact development that helps preserve open space in outlying areas by reducing the need and demand for low-density sprawling development, and it's a more efficient use of services and infrastructure. If you create density in one area, then you can have sewer and water that can serve those, those uses, and it can be denser than having to connect sewer and water lines further out into, outside of the main commercial areas. So that helps result in the cost savings for the public.
So, how did we pick, I mean, I, I think this is good for 52, but how do we pick the space on 82?
The Hopel Hamlet?
I mean, that's all developed, or mostly.
It, it is, but one of the things that we've always talked about, or previously had talked about, is allowing some sort of residential use in, in the downtown as far as within the, within potentially having apartments over the commercial uses. And it is the downtown center, so that's traditionally where you find mixed pieces.
I get that, I mean, I, I think that's where it should be. I just.
So you.
So I guess we're leaving it open for them to tear down the existing buildings that are there and build back up, or?
Or add, or.
Or build up.
Or build up.
Add, or renovate, expand.
I mean, but don't we wanna, I mean, if we change the zoning, don't we want it to be, are we gonna have laws on the looks of what this should?
So, yeah.
Because do we really want, like, this building all of a sudden being built up and then this building over here being built up? It doesn't look like that first picture you had on there.
No, so, so part of the, part of the things that we're discussing about with the mixed-use zoning is to add some design standards, and that would include how do, it talks about density to some extent, but it also talks about how the frontages of the building should look, how, potentially how tall they should be, where the building should come to as far as the street, so they, typically in mixed-use or downtown centers, the buildings come pretty close to the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk, right.
And that does a number of things. First of all, it, it makes it easier for people, pedestrians, to get in and out of buildings without having to walk for distances, but it also, when you have a road that goes with buildings kind of closer to the street, it actually acts as a traffic calmer, it makes people go slower, it's just, it's just the way it is. When you drive into a town that has buildings closer together, you tend to slow down, like if you think about driving through the Village of Fishkill, for example, you tend not to speed through that like you would in the area of Fishkill, that's further away where the CVS is, you're going a lot faster than you are when you're hitting the area with all the restaurants and the, and the pedestrian activity.
So what do we do about parking in that area?
So parking can be challenging, because also, as you know, with downtowns that have, you typically can have some parking challenges in a successful downtown, that can be, that can be a, what you would call it, an attribute of a successful town, a place where people wanna be, but we're thinking of maybe municipal lot of some sort. And also shared parking arrangements between areas, like we have a lot of parking where the Acme Plaza is that isn't used, and in the evening, when less people are shopping, potentially some of that area can be used for restaurants and other, other uses.
And, and a point I would make is if, during our tenures, correct me if I'm wrong, I can only think of one business in either of these zones that came forward of its own volition to change the site plan to improve flow and pedestrian access. One.
Chase.
Chase.
Yeah.
That's it.
I mean, I, I like this, I mean, I think it'll make the downtown look much better, just.
And I, so, I think, you know.
Getting, getting them to do it, though, I mean.
Well, and just so, just also.
Will there be an incentive to?
Well, we applied for, in addition to this, we applied for a grant, which is called a congestion mitigation air quality grant through DOT. DOT actually suggested that we apply for it, and Dutchess County was one of the county, one of, there were a handful of counties that were eligible for this particular grant, and it was to improve air quality. And one of the, the pieces of the grant would be to create some sort of connector road between Governor's Boulevard where Hopel Glenn is, and then connect it to Route 82, and then on, you know, through Unity Plaza, essentially. And then also create some sort of either intersection improvement via, I'm not sure if the intersection improvement would be a traffic circle or just a straight intersection improvement, but there would be potentially a traffic circle at Unity Plaza, and then also further down the road at, it's Unity and Trinka. And then there would also be sidewalk and pedestrian connections created, and we'd get rid of the suicide lane. And again, I'm not sure if it would be, end up being, because this has to be approved by DOT, because it's their roadway, and I'm not sure if the intersection improvements would be typical intersections with lights, or if it would be more of a circle, but that's being looked at and discussed. So we applied for a, I guess, five million dollar grant to do that, and we'll hear in about a month.
I remember when they wanted to do that at Pallan Road with the circle.
Yeah, well, and that was, what happened was, originally with Hopel Glenn, there were supposed to be some intersection improvements with Fishkill Road and Pallan Road, but it turned out that we couldn't make those improvements, because you couldn't cross the railroad tracks at an angle, you had to do it, so we, we had to abandon that, and we are now looking at other ways to improve traffic through the town, and also make it more pedestrian-friendly. So I have included a bunch of different pictures that you noticed, there are local and suburban towns that have done mixed-use zoning, and there, as you can see, there's many different styles, but I've included a bunch of pictures just for people to look at and, and comment on and give me any feedback that you want about what you like and what you don't like. But compact mixed-use development is most appropriate in places where a community wants to encourage economic activity and walking, create a sense of place, and provide a range of uses, services, and activities for residents and employers. So the locations of the proposed mixed-use zoning, as I've discussed, are the Hopel Junction Hamlet, Route 82 between Trinkle Lane and Orchard Place, and the Route 52 corridor between Lime Kiln and Corporate Park Drive, which is essentially where the, right across the street from the East Fishkill Soccer Club fields, in that plaza.
Was there any consideration of extending it a little bit further down to where the general store was?
Oh, in Wickaby?
Yeah.
And no one has mentioned that yet, but we were trying to stick to places where we could easily get sewer and water infrastructure, but that's something that we can consider and certainly a recommendation you can make. So the key elements of the, of our proposed mixed-use zoning is that it will allow mixed-use by special permit, second and potentially third floor residential above ground floor commercial, there'll be no change to the underlying zoning, so if you're a property owner within either location, you can still exist under the, the zoning that is there today, and you would just apply for a special permit to allow you to do the mixed uses.
Michelle, does that stay that way forever? Or is there a limit to the number of special permits you would allow, or could every parcel come and request the special permit?
Right now, it's written so that anyone could request a special permit, but it's something that could be considered if, if we were concerned, say, that there was too much residential happening, but I think initially, at least, we're hoping that, that we're trying to make it as flexible as possible to allow the property owners as much leeway as they can to redevelop and, and hopefully renovate and revitalize the downtown.
So why do we make it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What, why do we make it a permit instead of a new zone?
Well, it's to allow folks to continue to exist under the existing zoning if they wanna keep their property the way it is, and, because there are some rules with this, there are some design guidelines that would go along with it, and that would, so anybody that would apply for a special permit would also be.
So setbacks and things like that may be different with the special permit than they are under the current.
It will definitely be different. And there's actually differences right now written in between the Route 52 corridor and the Hopel Hamlet corridor, because obviously they're, they're different in the way they feel, and I think that, for instance, we may have, we may have a limit on the size of a store that could go in along the Hopel corridor so that we don't necessarily attract a big box restaurants, we might not want, you know, to allow one single standing store that's eighty thousand square feet right along the road, front edge, right? Whereas on the Route 52 side, we, I mean, I'm sorry, in the, yeah, Route 52 side, we may be able to allow a slightly larger, single-standing restaurant, like maybe in, you know, like, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, like an Applebee's type, or a, I don't know, some typical sort, you know what I'm saying? So we may, there may be differences in sizes that we're looking at between the two, the two areas, because they are different in character.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Is anybody talking to the fire district? Yeah?
No. About what?
About buildings that look like that.
Um, no, but they will get, once it gets referred, they'll get, they'll receive the referral.
Yes.
Yeah.
We don't have those buildings yet.
I have to admit that one point about all of this that I'm least fond of is this idea that everything has to be individually, the idea that everything has to be individually permanent, instead of just saying, as Lori indicated, a new zoning. That just allows people to just go, you know, that it may create additional reluctance.
Well, I mean, that's certainly a comment that you can make back to the town board. So, it, the zoning will also promote attractive design, because it will include some design guidelines, it will encourage pedestrian-friendly building design and site layout, unobtrusive parking, we're gonna try to focus on putting the parking, you know, to the rear of the buildings to the extent that we can, and then appropriately scaled building height. Buildings with a range of heights tend to look best in village settings, and that there must be a connection to public sewer and water. And then the setbacks, the proposed setbacks in the mixed-use district are intended to be smaller than typical or auto-oriented suburban development, but they also do not reach the density of more urban centers. So right now, in the literature, basic twelve-foot setback from the curb line is recommended, except along arterial streets, which are streets that are busier, where a minimum of twenty feet can allow for greater buffering between pedestrians and traffic, so that's what I was talking about before, where you see the buildings up closer is where you have more traffic coming, when the buildings are further away, you get, and on, typically on the arterial streets, you get faster traffic, and you don't want that when you have pedestrians close by and walking on sidewalks, so there's, there's sort of a balance there. And then flexible side and rear setbacks are recommended to promote efficient site design, just because especially with infill, like we're doing in the Hopel Hamlet, you need to be a little bit more flexible, because there's existing buildings everywhere, so in order to fit buildings, then you have to have flexibility in site design.
So flexibility at the purview of the planning board, or you're gonna have?
With the ARB. There's gonna be some setbacks written in, and then we're gonna probably consider some flexibility, and I don't know exactly how we're gonna do that yet, because we haven't decided, but there's gonna certainly be some ability for, potentially for people to choose, you know, like, for instance, you could say that one side yard setback has to be, can be five feet, and one has to be, you know, greater than this distance, so that you can have some flexibility in how people arrange the uses on the site. Okay, next. And then I just gave some examples of village-scale mixed-use buildings that, taken from different places. The, the bottom left-hand picture is, is an existing village, and you can see that some of the older villages and towns around here already sort of have mixed-use buildings, and that's because in the olden days before we had cars.
Where it was.
They were built that way. And then you can see some of the newer buildings that have been designed, and you can see some of the areas around here, like Fishkill sorted did a, a new plaza where the Indian Restaurant is, and that, they, they sorted a whole facade improvement and showed, they did some of this where they showed the different, variated heights of the buildings, and they kind of did, but they, I don't think they've allowed any residential there, but they made it look like there was residential there, so. So, some of this is being done around us.
Did you say, maybe I just misunderstood it, they don't have to follow a mixed use?
You don't, you can still.
They could just, they could still build the way they built it.
It's, the existing zoning is.
Because you're gonna have this guy in the middle that says, no, I don't want it to look like any of these, and it's just gonna look like crap, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, it.
But if you, if you.
If we're adding this zone, we should add the zone, and if, if, for some reason they wanna make a change, well, then this, this is what you gotta do, I mean, it's.
But I would submit that we're, we're not starting with a world heritage site, so I would think that pretty much all the changes would be positive.
We also don't want to penalize existing building owners.
But you're gonna get that one guy in the middle, that's, it's, could it just make it just make it look like crap as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, it's got to look great in the city when you go down and there's still that one building, building in the middle of it, yeah.
So, so Michelle, when we bring buildings closer to the sidewalk, closer to the roadway, I understand everything you're saying about, um, traffic calming and things like that, but without a plan for municipal parking, is the expectation that we bring the building closer to the road and there's parking in the back and you just have various access points, or, because a lot of what we're seeing here, these look like, um, I'm just, zero lot line buildings, right? They're just kind of all, um, one to the next to the next, so.
Or they have the parking in the front, you know, parallel parking and the street parking, some of them, yeah, which is.
Well, okay, but that would be one car in front of each storefront, and I would think that that's not conducive to bringing more people downtown, right? So there has to be a plan for parking, either municipal parking, or you're saying you're going to have some sort of rear access roads where people can park and then walk around to the front and do their pedestrian.
Right, so.
Stroll.
Um, I don't know exactly what year it was, but there was a plan that was created, um, that was done that showed those access streets and the parking in the rear.
Okay.
And that's another thing that is being contemplated as part of the grant that we went for.
Okay.
So obviously, there's a, there's many things that sort of have to fall in place for this to, to ultimately come out exactly the way we want, but I think we need to start somewhere. And I also think that typically what happens is once, um, you have a, I don't know, a gateway project in town, that, that, and it works well and it comes out, it looks good and people are using it the way they should be using it, then that typically will start to generate other buildings wanting to do similar types of things. So we're hoping, um, we're looking at all of those different things. We're looking at the traffic patterns, we're looking at the roadway improvements, we're looking at parking, and we're looking at the zoning.
So I don't know how, um, how others feel about this, but for me personally, I don't care for the parallel parking right next to the, the travelway that way on, on a busy road. Like, it's one thing to have a side street where people parallel park. So I prefer that you, in some of your pictures here, you have the perpendicular parking that's kind of against the roadway. That to me is a, um, especially on a more traveled road, I think probably is safer.
Right, and I don't think you're going to get parking along, I mean, I, I don't think DOT would ever approve parking along Route 52 in the main, that, that, I mean, along 82 in that main corridor. I don't think they're going to do it.
Just brings me back to, okay, so if we're not going to allow parking at the roadway and we're going to have road, sidewalk, building, we're going to have to make sure that we've planned for either the municipal parking or the, like you said, the shared parking that's easily accessible.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, doesn't this follow under what, like what the Greenway Act was all about? Trying to pull buildings closer to the road, having parking in the back?
There's been a number, there was a pedestrian plan that, that was done by the county. I don't know what year it was done, that shows, um, that shows some of these types of improvements. There's been a number of plans that have kind of shown variations of, of this time type of thing, um, but, you know, obviously, it takes time to, to.
Yeah.
Implement, and, um, and it has to happen, you know, there's many steps that are involved. Um, and I guess we'll find out probably in the next month or so whether or not we have received some money for some of the roadway improvements, because I think right now, um, that 52 corridor, we have to do something about the traffic before we can even look to seeing what the sidewalk and, and the, um, roadway improvements have to be made before we can actually look at some of this stuff, too.
For those, uh, Michelle and I are on the, the town's economic development.
We're going to need you in your mind.
I'm sorry. Sit down. Uh, the point I was going to make is that Michelle and I are both on the, on the town's economic development committee, and one, you know, so we got to read thousands of pages of white papers about how do you actually even begin to improve economics at a very local level? And, you know, there were certain things that are just like automatics. And one of them is you have to create some kind of center or place for your town, and it's usually done very much this way through a mixed use that gets people to really, because right now, if you were to ask the citizens of East Fishkill, you know, what's the image you have of East Fishkill? Like with New York City, I'm sure there's a few landmarks, but with this town, there's really no place of, sense of place or center to this, and that's kind of where this all starts, so.
So then I'm just, I'll show you just one more image, but that was it.
Sorry, I'm.
No, no, that's okay.
Actually, I just use this, my comment as an excuse not to have to flip the charts anymore.
Hold down in the chart.
All right, there you go.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's.
You're welcome.
So that shows, you know, this, this shows a greater area. I mean, at, at some point, sometimes what you also see in these towns is, um, there'll be one developer that will buy up several parcels and then sort of, you know, create some sort of master plan for those parcels that will include the parking and the roadways and, um, and, you know, that potentially could happen here. There are locations potentially that, that might be conducive to that, but, um, maybe potentially more along the, the 52 corridor than in Hopewell Hamlet. But, um, there's certainly places where we might be able to see some exciting new projects come, and they can, um, hopefully implement some of these ideas and, and start the town towards a more, I think, one of the big things for me is seeing more pedestrian friendly, um, development.
Great. So Michelle, in, attached to the top of the PowerPoint, we have the actual, it looks like the draft of the special permit itself.
Mm-hmm.
So the town board is looking for feedback from the planning board. We typically do that by drafting a memo. You usually help us with the memos. Um, what's our timing as far as when the town board needs feedback from us?
January.
January? Okay. So why don't we?
It's on, they're having a continued public hearing in December, but I think their intent would be to roll it over one more time to make sure there's enough comment.
Okay.
So what's been the feedback at the public so far?
Uh, there really hasn't been any.
None.
Major stuff, no.
No, I think there's been similar kinds of questions, parking.
I, I really, I think that what we have to do is take a little look at modifying this proposal to add to it, um, a reuse special permit for the existing, because when you have an existing area, you're really not going to be, in my opinion, able to get them to move the buildings out and everything else. But I think we should have a tool that would allow them in exchange for site improvement, i.e. a different facade, et cetera, that they could convert the existing upper level or add an upper level for the apartments, which is now possible because of the water and sewer. So we have some commercial buildings in the Hamlet here. Unfortunately, we don't have sewer and water over in, um, on, um, in Fishkill Plains yet, but there is some, you know, red, um, commercial as we know, it is dying fast. Offices are going out, too. So a lot of buildings have vacant second floors that could be perhaps converted into some, uh, residential use, which would generate a little more income, which will allow the property owner to clean up the site and have a vision of some sort that they would look a little more unified in their architectural design.
Okay.
So I think that addresses some of the concerns. I think this is great in areas like more under 52 corridor where it's less developed yet.
Well, that's what, that was kind of my point before, is what incentive do we give to the property owner to improve?
Sorry.
My point before was what incentive do we give to the property, property owner to?
Well, I think the, the only incentive we can really give them is the fact that they're going to have the extra income now from the rentals.
Renting.
You know?
Sure, yeah.
And in exchange for that, they're, they're going to obviously have to do some work to this, to the site, clean it up.
Yeah.
And also, as you know, part of the, uh, road system changes in Hopewell as this DOT progresses with the closing of the suicide lane and the installation of some roundabouts would be to actually physically put in an interconnection road, uh, you know, behind, uh, Rite Aid and up through there to interconnect all those parking lots and to give another access and make the flow better, so that even lends itself to this, that if they participate in that, they can get a few more things on their site.
So, so Michelle, I think what I'm going to suggest then is let's put this on our agenda for December again. This gives all of us a chance to read through it. Um, I strongly encourage you to take a look. There, there's some pretty big changes recommended with this. I think they're positive changes, but, um, this is our moment to weigh in and share our thoughts with the town board. So Michelle, if you, if we can, if you have thoughts ahead of time before the December meeting, please email them to Michelle. She can get her, get us started with a comment response. Um, but if everybody could take a few minutes, read through this and, and think about the.
Are all the boards participating?
Yeah, so I presented to the town board already, and I did get some similar.
I would hope so.
Questions about parking was a big one. Also questions about design, similar.
But I mean, are we talking to the, is the zoning board commenting? Is ARB commenting?
Well, I think we should.
Well, ARB will be involved in some of the comments.
Yeah, but I mean, they should comment on the law at least.
Yeah.
ARB, I think, is going to help me look at some of the design guidelines, definitely. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Michelle, this was good. Thank you for walking us through.
Yeah, I like it.
That's very, very helpful. I think it's, uh, pretty exciting for the town to consider things like this. That's cool.
And then the other referral from the town board is a proposed rezoning for, um, a lot on Route 82, and they want to go from, it's currently zoned R1, and they want to go to B1, and, um, most of you will know.
Or Maple's Fish Market.
Yeah.
Where it used to be on 82.
So it's the old Fish Market building, um, and.
That's residential?
It's, it's a residential zone, yeah.
It's always been residential, it was pre-existing, non-conform, because all residential built up around.
But the Fish Market was residential?
Yeah.
They lived there.
It existed prior to any zoning.
No, yeah, no, yeah, I just.
And by the way, I noticed the parking lot still has, still has an enormous parking lot.
So the, the property owner had, had approached the town and asked to do a rezoning, but they weren't really quite sure what they wanted. They wanted to rezone to commercial, but they didn't have a specific use in mind, which makes it difficult.
Right.
So.
You must have some plan.
And I don't know if, if all of you have seen the, um, comments from the county, they.
We have a copy of it from Pam. They reject, it looks like they rejected it.
The county has recommended against it.
Yeah, they've recommended against it. It, it's a difficult, it's a difficult site because it is surrounded by residential and because there is limited parking on it for any sort of commercial use as well. Um, it's, it's small and there's, um, there's an existing drainage or stream area that also makes any kind of improvements that they would need to make to the parking difficult.
And in the, in the past, with property owners, we've, um, suggested that they consider a, a multiple residential type use, um, you know, two, three unit type use there that probably would blend in, uh, a little bit more, you know, fit in with the community a little bit better there, and yet give them a return based on whatever their investment was.
And Michelle, our timing for the town, town board feedback from us, I know they're already receiving the recommendation for denial.
Well, they don't have any hearings scheduled or anything on this. They just received it and referred it to.
Okay.
And we will be receiving, there is, I know that there is another, um, rezone application that came in for shade and sun property, which you haven't seen yet, but that's going to be coming as well.
I see it every day.
So.
So do you.
They've cleaned it up.
There's going to be a number of these in the next couple of months.
No, they do, they're doing it.
Okay. In general with this one, I, we, we've seen other rezone requests where the parcel is contiguous with a B1 district or something like that, where there, or there was clear existing surrounding business uses. I, I, I think that, um, without the applicant saying, I want to do something very specific so we can understand really what they're getting at here, it's difficult to make a recommendation to approve it, because to me, it feels like spot zoning. Um, I know that the, the residential zone does allow some, um, ancillary business uses, like a home office or something like that. So just without knowing what they're trying to do, Tom, I guess more to your point, is there, is there a multifamily use or residential use with an accessory business or something like that that would be more appropriate?
That was something we could probably accommodate easier than business.
Than just.
Right. Right. So, that's my initial thoughts. I, we, we can add, maybe add this to our December agenda as well to finalize a comment letter, but, um, this one is a tough, tougher, tougher one than some of the other ones we've seen, be, just because it doesn't have anything surrounding it that would lend itself to business, in my opinion.
And, and I, there's some houses really close.
Yeah.
So it's not like you're driving along and all of a sudden it's open road and you haven't seen anything for a while, and there's house, house, this.
Right, well, so then you're going to have landscaping and lighting and, you know, there's a lot of.
I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, impacts, exactly.
I know you're not used to that, but I'm agreeing with you.
Wow.
There you go.
Excellent. All right, great. Anything else for tonight, guys? On that happy note.